Speaker or last participant, Miss Kashmiramurmu. Uh, Miss Kashmiramurmu is the Assistant Professor of Aravinda in Bahati. And I think she happens to be the youngest Assistant Professor of Her State. And she is a burglar and she is a speaker, she is a poet. And she has many potentialities in her field. And she has people under the guidance of Professor Dr. Olkarananda Palida of Aravinda University. And today she will speak on the concept man and nature. Over to Miss Kashmiramurmu.
Uh, hello, am I audible?
Yes, it's audible.
And is my screen visible?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, it is not visible.
Wait, your screen is visible, screen is visible.
I'm not visible, I'm talking about the P P T. Actually, I have an issue with my laptop, like the webcam is not working.
Okay. But it should be visible in this program.
Sir, when it.
Okay, in laptop, both, both things can be done. Your visibility and paper visibility, what can be done?
Okay, okay, after, okay, okay, after presentation, you, you should close your presentation and you should be visible, okay?
Okay, sir. Uh, uh, good evening, everyone. It's really late, but I hope that we all have the patience to listen to me, the last speaker. Uh, so let me just take you back a few years back, when it was Beijing Olympics. There was a news in the news channels that a certain portion of the cloud was shifted from its natural position so that it may not rain when the sports event would take place. It was one of the greatest technologies of the Chinese government. But what about the disturbance that it created in the ecosystem? What about the disturbance that it created in the natural system? This is the world that we live in. The present talk deals with the study of the relationship between man and nature. The environment around man, which includes the air, water, our biotic components and biotic components, is an integral part of man's life without which his survival is not possible. But because of anthropogenic activities, negative impact has been resulted on the environment, the effects of which are already visible around man like global warming and climate change. As a result, various biological, chemical and physical pollutants and potential pathogens have evolved and developed that can harm people's health through series of complex transport and exposure systems. All this destruction can lead to very fatal consequences. Friends, we need to understand that the relationship between man and nature is deep. Man's obligation towards nature is there and his actions have direct impact on nature. If man lives in harmony with nature, then there shall be balance in the ecosystem. And if man lives at the cost of nature, then that would give rise to environmental issues. So what are these environmental issues? Environmental problems occur when there is imbalance in the ecosystem, such as global warming and climate change. Industrialization also contributes substantially to environmental problems. And environmental problems have long-term impact on contemporary humanity and future society. So how will such problems hamper the future generation? Just take the example of the ozone layer depletion. If the ozone layer will deplete, then it will extinct the entire human race. So, man today bears obligation towards the future generation. In order to find a possible solution, we need to look into the philosophical perspectives and analyze various issues pertaining to the man-nature relationship. One of the theories that comes to the forefront is the theory of anthropocentrism. The term anthropocentrism has derived, has been derived from the terms anthropos and centric, which means man-centered, and it says that man is the holder of moral right. He is superior because he possesses intellect whereas non-humans are driven by instinct. He has free will and the capacity for decision-making. And the superiority of man over non-humans has been emphasized in Genesis by Aristotle and by Thomas Aquinas. In Genesis of Bible, it has been mentioned that God made man in his own image and let him have dominion over everything present on the earth. Even Aristotle said that there is hierarchy in the state of nature. Plants exist for the sake of animals and animals exist for the sake of human beings. Aquinas in his book Samatheologica subscribes to the viewpoint in the Genesis and Aristotle by saying that there are no place for man since against nature. But there are certain inherent flaws in anthropocentrism. Anthropocentrism cannot explain the bound and obligation of man towards nature and animals. And because of such bias, man is witnessing the wrath of nature in the form of environmental problems. So, there needs to be an alternative. Biocentrism is the alternative. Biocentrism is a value system which treats not only human beings but also non-human creatures as having moral worth. It presents a holistic ethics which expresses respect and concern for protection of both hu- human and non-human species. For biocentrism, there is no room for special or privileged status of man in relation to others and life as such is sacred. Everything in this universe, all the biotic components are interconnected and interdependent with each other. Biocentrism is well articulated in Albert Squires' Reverence for Life, where he denies distinction among various life forms on earth and says that each life form has its intrinsic value. Even Paul Taylor speaks of biocentric egalitarianism, according to which every living organism on earth has equal moral worth and significance. But there are certain inherent flaws of biocentrism too. It does not extend moral consideration to non-living elements like earth and water bodies. Because of such narrow view, mindless exploitation of nature occurs. Hence, there needs to be an alternative and the alternative is ecocentrism. Now, ecocentrism is a value system which holds that both living and non-living entities in nature have moral worth. There is intimate interrelatedness among all the elements in the state of nature and human beings bear direct obligation to protect nature as a whole. Man, animals, plants and all elements in the state of nature have intrinsic value. This can be understood by the land ethics of Leopold in which Leopold extends the notion of community to include not only living beings but all other parts of nature such as soil, water, plants, animals and land. Even Naismith talked about deep and shallow ecology. Shallow ecology is the mindset where we think that we need to preserve the ecosystem so that we can be protected. On the other hand, deep ecology states that we need to preserve the ecosystem for its own sake without thinking about the possible benefits that will, that will, it will beget on human beings. But friends, is this sufficient? All these theories that we have read, are they sufficient to solve the contemporary problems? Here, I will bring forth the notion of Sri P R Sarkar by his theory of cosmocentrism. So what is cosmocentrism? Cosmocentrism is a more refined form of ecocentrism insofar as it provides metaphysical support for a holistic environmental ethical paradigm. For example, the open issues declare that the world of phenomenal diversities have a common point of origin insofar as it is the one which has become many. Since it is the one which has become many, it is the nature of the primordial substance that determines essential nature of the particulars or the phenomenal diversities. In this sense, the difference between the living and non-living is not one of kind but of degree. Every anim- inanimate or non-living thing is potentially infinite, potentially conscious and possesses mind. As the ultimate reality is of the nature of pure consciousness, every created thing is potentially conscious. This metaphysical backdrop holds out the rationale as to why one should treat everyone else as one skin or kindred. That which appears to be inanimate has the inherent potency to go through different phases of evolution and ultimately prove to be none different from the intelligent human beings. There is nothing alien or other. Everything has its existential or intrinsic value in the cosmic family. And the concept of cosmic family that is Vasudevakutumbhakam is a corollary of the vision of oneness. In diversities, through the, the things which appear to be different, there is an essential identity insofar as everything and every being is of the nature of one fundamental essence. Given this, there is no room for discrimination, disparity, exploitation of human beings. It paves the, is partitioned by human beings. It paves the room for the ethics of live and let live because there is realization by people by and large that we can live the best only when we live for the rest. Thus, the ideal of global brotherhood or cosmic patrimony shall become a living reality only when man has non-arrogant understanding of the nature of the relationship between man and the environment, eventually realizing that we can best live when we let others let live. This constitutes the basis of a holistic living where each object or being is considered sacrosanct and looked upon as one's intimate kin. This love and service become the watchword for the individual and society as a whole. We can rightfully conclude by saying that man has moral obligation towards everything. Because he is rational, rational being, he must act as a steward towards protecting the cosmic harmony by protecting each and everything present in the cosmic world. Gross anthropocentrism will only make room for mindless exploitation and biocentrism and ecocentrism itself will not be sufficient enough to provide a fruitful answer to the contemporary problem. We need to put in P R Sarkar's new humanism into the forefront, his cosmocentric framework. So new humanism conceives nature as a web where each part is an integral part of the whole and underlies the notion of cosmic interrelatedness and interdependence among everything and being in the state of nature. Hence, man is never under obligation to extend his love to the non-humans and every element in the state of nature. The, this lays the foundation of the existential ideal, live and let live, which is possible where man on account of his developed intellect plays the role of a steward in relation to the rest of the creation. Here, I would like to point out that Sri P R Sarkar talks about micro-vita or the cosmic particle, the cosmic mystery, the secret that is present in each and everything in this world. That is the blessing of the supreme. Because the supreme, uh, we, because we are a part of the supreme, we should think that each and everything in this world is a part of the supreme. Only when that sort of consciousness is arise, then only we can save nature. We cannot save nature only by saying that we should do this and we should do that. There needs to be a sort of feeling of oneness with nature. So in today's world, man should not be under nature. That is, he should not think that he will be exploited or injured by nature just in the past days he was. When in ancient times, the ancient human being was governed by nature. He should not be over nature, that is what is happening now, that he is creating technology to even vanish honeybees. And if all the honeybees will get vanished, then human extinction will happen. He wants to make bridges on things that no one had ever imagined, like up above in the sky or under the water, which will eventually disturb the ecosystem, the ecological balance. Rather, he should walk with nature. That is, he should follow green technology and sustainable development. He should use resources just like a honeybee uses the nectar of a flower without disturbing the beauty and integrity of the flower. He should utilize it but not exploit it. And not to forget, he should not utilize it not just for himself and but he should also preserve it for his future generations. We can switch from the non-renewable resources to renewable resources. We can switch to alternatives, green technologies. But what is more important is P R Sarkar's view that there should be a feeling of oneness with nature. Until and unless this feeling of oneness is there, nature cannot be solved, saved. And the problem of man and nature cannot be solved. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, Miss Kashmiram, for your clear and comprehensive presentation on man and nature, which is a topic of environmental ethics. And within a short span of time, you are able to show your expertise by reflecting all the points of the environmental ethics like anthropocentrism, ecocentrism, cosmos, cosmocentrism, land ethics, ecology, new humanism and all the points you have, you have reflected. And by which you have shown that, shown the man's obligation for nature, for future surroundings. And you have also related the harmony or the balance between man and nature. And I don't want to speak much. Now, I want to request Professor Dr. K Umanam Rao to carry on the interactive session.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor Maharana. Well, Kashmiramurmu, well, within a short time and you could present very nicely. Thank you so much for that. So, let us move to. See who, well, Ranjit sir is not there. Well, Kalas sir is there. Kalas das sir, please. Kalas das sir is also not there. Yes, sir, yes, sir, please.
Uh, thank you, Narayan Bhavu. Uh, I must congratulate Kashmiram for having a very all-comprehensive paper. Um, in a very short time, she has exposed the problem and philosophical reactions and different positions with regard to relationship of man with nature. Uh, I must congratulate her for her attempt, very nice attempt. And she has concluded with the cosmocentrism, uh, that, um, live and let live will be the philosophy. But, uh, look, there are two important theories in this context which are very contemporary thinkers are saying. And you have highlighted all these things. One of the important philosophers of the present day, who is just recently, he has expired, Paul Coors. He has given an idea with regard to man's relationship with nature. And his idea is planetary humanism. In planetary humanism theory, what he says is addresses most of the problems. Look, all these philosophical doctrines are looking satisfactory and illusion so far the practical uses of the world, the way the world leaders are going and leading us. For example, there is a now war in a country, there is always possibility of a second world war. And you know the devastation of a war and the environmental degradation by that. Man's loss for luxury and comfort has tried him to make the world so much industrialized. So it has thoroughly exploited nature in water, air and everywhere we have found the exploitation. So, if we don't learn to live wisely, we are going to die like fools. That is what Paul Coors will warn the leaders of the world. And when he says about planetary humanism, that the countries who are trying to produce more and when it gets started, where as you have pointed out, one of the speakers have pointed that, I don't think you have pointed out, that this all thing started after the industrial revolution. And a lot of things are produced and to sell their products, the countries, advanced countries, industrial advanced countries started to have colonies to sell. And colonialism was a result of only selling goods to other countries and producing lots of, lots of goods to sell. But this has ended in today's catastrophe of global warming and environmental crisis. And we must know that nowadays, many people are just dying because of many respiratory problems, because the air is polluted. And everybody, maybe more and more people will be suffering from this in near future. So, Paul Coors has said about planetary humanism, it says that a kind of humanism, which is going to consider all the people of the world in one basis, that this is where citizenship of the world. That way, we can solve lot of problems, this, that, risk for competition will not be there. So much goods will not be there and lot of expenditure of the countries will not be there in the field of preparing for arms and ammunition, producing large industries. So, a sustainable development position is given by Vishwabharti today in the paper. That is, our own tribals, we have lot to learn from them, their lifestyle to have a sustainable, um, world in future because they have minimized their need, needs and try to live in harmony with nature for a long period without harming. And they have treated, also, this is a kind of a cosmocentric world and reverence to the things of nature, things and beings. Whatever I have derived from nature, they have tried to respect nature in all its departments. So, I think we need not go so far to all these theories but learn from our ancestors, especially the tribals those are staying in, in the far places and taking the water from the river, using, not exploiting this. Whatever they have got from the nature, they have tried to worship nature for that and be happy with it. So, this is one of the things and I will think that you will reflect over Paul Coors planetary humanism that may be a very recent theory. And thank you very much. One second, this is my observation, no specific questions. You have beautifully exposed all these prevalent theories of man's relationship with nature. Thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, Professor Das, for your observations. But as I could see that Paul Coors planetary humanism is more or less like the new humanism of P R Sarkar that Kashmiram even talked of, okay?
Right, right, right.
I see a parallel, okay? So, that's how we have an Indian side to this planetary humanism. Well, Jyoti Madam wants to say something. Welcome, Madam.
Yes, sir, I must congratulate Kashmiram. Actually, it's a very good paper. I must say that actually you have covered many things. Initially, you started discussing the relationship between man and nature and how anthropocentric approach has dominated and, and the repercussion, we have seen that. And very rightly, then you pointed out the cosmocentric approach which Indian knowledge system is having. And that is what, but I, I will request you, if you can focus on little bit on the, when you talk about the man-nature relationship. One thing you see that there is a, in Marxism, also they talk lot about man and nature. But that is a kind of anthropocentric model you find within Marxism that man controls the nature and transforms the nature. And that is anthropocentric model you find. And coming back to the Vedic model, Yajurveda and somewhere the Atharvveda, the Gumi Sukta of Atharvveda, they talk lot about the environment. So if you can refer to that and add to your presentation and few Vedic elements that how, which kind of plants are important and what needs to be done as Professor Kalas sir also pointed out many things to the tribal culture or to our culture, very rightly you have mentioned anything. But if you add to that Vedas, specific Vedas and so far as the conservation of environment is concerned and man, man and nature's relationship is concerned through cosmocentric model, so I think it will be a good. So that's my suggestion, this, but it's a very good paper, well thought, that paper because anthropocentrism has no role to play. Everywhere you find that when you talk about man is at the center and, and that is a kind of dominance you find Western world more talk about that. But when it comes to Indian theory, we always believe that nature is everything. Nature is except Spinoza, you find that nobody in waste talk about mature nature. So, at least Spinoza's talk about that pantheism, all in God and give emphasis on the nature as God, nature, natureata, that philosophy. But otherwise, you find always they talk about anthropocentric approach. And we still have a better approach, so we can give it to the whole world to establish the Vasudevakutumbhakam model. And successfully, we can save the environment if we go by the cosmocentric model. That's my submission. Thank you so much for a good.
Well, thank you, thank you, Jyoti Madam for your very nice observations. Well, well, Kashmiram, you, would you like to say something now or later you want to respond? Because that also carries with, because we want to see how you respond actually, okay? Well, nothing to say, well, want to say something? Yes, well, well, let us go to Doctor Anupri sir.
Um, Kashmiram, it's a very, um, very nice paper you have presented. And your style of presentation is also very nice. But unfortunately, we couldn't see you when you were presenting the paper. Uh, anyway, that's a technical problem you face. Um, nowadays, man has become cosmocentric, not for nothing, not just. He became, he was anthropocentric, anthropocentric, then he become, all of a sudden, oh, he learned from experience that it is foolish to be anthropocentric. Anthropocentrism has a base and it has a ground reason to be so widespread. The, from the, think, from the time of Pythagoras, Aristotle and all the great philosophers of Western philosopher, uh, to Darwin, all these, all philosophers, they all thought of survival of the fittest, might is right. And because human being said might, he has intelligence, he was, it is, man is very powerful. And so, uh, he dominated the world. Why only we go to Pythagoras, of to Pythagoras? Look at Bible, look at Genesis. In Genesis, God is speaking to man, Adam and Adam, Adam, go, I have created the sky, the ocean, the air only for you, gay and go and enjoy the nature as much as you like with it. You are, he say telling to human being that you are the center of the universe. It is you to enjoy the nature, enjoy the world. So, everywhere, the idea of anthropocentrism was there and it was so prevalent till almost today. That forest were cut off, ozone layer were broken, all these things happened. When man found that after doing, with doing these things, we are facing more problem than solution, our next generation is in danger. Then he tried otherwise, he thought otherwise, he became, he tried to become cosmocentric. Of course, India and only in India, I mean in Indian philosophy, cosmocentrism was always there. Sarvevahant Sukhina, Sarvevahantunidawa, in, say in Rigveda, Modhuksharanthisindhava, Modhugata Ruttayate, Modhuksharanthisindhava. All these, so called, they give the message to the world that we live with the nature. We are not apart from nature, mother nature and we are not only men. Man and all the living beings, uh, man is a child and nature is the mother with immobile god still not cut off. It will be there and with, without the nature, man cannot live a day. So, nature has to be protected. So that's what you have projected in your paper in a very nice manner. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Wish you very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Doctor Roy and also thank Jyoti Madam. Yes, thank you Dr Rao and also thank Jayanti Madam, as both of you said that much of the ideas of cosmocentrism are contained in our ancient texts and just we are waking up now, where we have passed through the stages of, say, say, say fearing nature in the ancient past. Then with the advancement of knowledge, we started exploiting nature. And we have passed to a stage where no more exploitation, any more exploitation is suicidal. So, we are now saying that now we are with nature, okay. The question is, the idea is there, the idea of cosmocentrism, cosmocentrism in theory, well, it's alright, acceptable. But still, still, my question is, is man committed to this cosmocentric idea even this day? Has he really, he is with this idea? He is conscious about this idea of cosmocentrism and the extent of exploitation that we have done? Because the exploitation is still going on, we are still exploiting nature. It is in theory that we say that we are with nature. Any disturbance to or any harm to any component, biotic or abiotic, is suicidal for the human existence. People have realized this theoretically, but practically they are, this not the case. Exploitation is still going on. The ideas of sustainable development that we speak of in theory, practically are not carried on. So, having defending your thesis, I want to know from you, what is your view, the practical side of defending this cosmocentric position, the practical side?
Thank you sir for your question. It is indeed a very good question and correct question to ask. So, first of all, I would just differentiate one thing, that when we use man, while even I used the term man while talking, I took it as a collective noun. But when we see practically, then we see M E N, men. So when we see men, we see that the majority of men are still tilted towards the anthropocentric viewpoint. And there are certain men, means people, who are being, who are trying to, whether either they have realized the value of cosmocentrism today, like the people who are reforming themselves, or the ones who are, have been practicing cosmocentrism, like the tribals of the tribals and the people of the forests. So, on the practical side, I would say, man is, he is not realizing it till now, because he is, he is being governed by his greed. Mahatma Gandhi said that we have room for need, but not for greed. But man, the only thing because of which man, despite of knowing that it is not correct to be anthropocentric, rather he should be cosmocentric, the only thing that is governing him is greed. And when this greed will be diminished or removed, then only we can say that cosmocentrism can be practically realized. But I would not say that it is completely a theory, a utopian theory, because there are people who are practicing it. But the majority of us are not yet practicing it. Another thing that I would like to point out here is that, it is not just because some people just do, just know, but they're not practicing. Because subjects like philosophy, subjects like ethics, subjects like value education are not being inculcated in our curriculums and in our value systems, because of which this is happening. Because there are many people who are not even aware about the outcomes of their actions today. Like the people who are just creating, going on creating industries and technologies, they are talking about profits, they have all these wonderful degrees in all these business and etcetera, etcetera. But they don't have a human degree in value or a human degree in at least understanding or reflecting back. Man is so much engrossed in today's rat race, that he is not reflecting back that what will happen if he will exploit nature. He doesn't even think that he is exploiting nature, he is saying that I'm just making industries so that economic development will happen, so that land will be there. But he is not thinking about what if this will have a negative impact. So for that, first, number one, we need to realize the value. Second, we need to not be just talk the talk, but walk the walk. Number three, we need to seriously take it. Number four, we need to make a real great reform in our educational system. Without reforming the educational system and without counseling people around, I don't think cosmocentrism will be a practical thing. Like, it has been there since so many years and so many generations, through our ancestors, through the tribals. Yet, it is there, yet we are not able to see it because of the greed that we are bound with. So, for all these things, the steps that I said, that needs to be taken into account, and then only we can completely realize it. I would not feel that we have not realized it, because Medha, Medha Parker and Chippco movement would not have happened if that would not have been realized. But this much amount is not sufficient. We need, there's a really long way to go ahead and we need to work really, really, really lot, or else the future is just dark.
Thank you, thank you Kashmir for your response.
Can I add one point here? See Kashmir, there is a point of differences are there, because see when we go by anthropocentric model or cosmocentric model, yet also within anthropocentric model, if you go by Marxian philosophy, there is a critique of also you find in Heidegger, when he speaks about that criticism against the technology or danger which are coming due to the modern technology. If you go by that, he is like all few existentialists, taking Kekigad and Heidegger, though they followed the, always they follow the method of anthropocentrism, but that awareness has come up that the danger which are coming because of the technology. So they also, they are criticizing the application of the technology and there you find, Heidegger is saying that when we use the technology, we just use the technology as a means, but we never question the essence of the technology. So what he is proposing that we should worry, he is worried about the way that modern use of the technology are taking place, which is in the long run, you see the danger for the nature also, danger for everything. So that also he is pointing out, not that people are not aware, or people are doing work on that also within anthropocentric model. But when we talk about cosmocentric model, we still have a very valid points, because we are in a kind of higher side. Even if you talk about anthropocentric model, that will not be a sustainable model for a long run. So ultimately, that as you said also very rightly, some people are working and some are not at work, working, because that's a kind of materialistic progress which we are looking for, which Heidegger also points out, that he has given several examples and relation between traditional technology and the modern technology and danger which is coming due to the modern technology, not because of the traditional use of the technology, lot of things he is talking about. So, now the time has come to realize the importance of the traditional value system, which Indian, Indian knowledge system is having and as you rightly pointed out on this and until we introduce in the educational curriculum system, the things are not going to change. And in India, always we worship nature and we believe that more than the man, nature is powerful, not like Bible, we started a kind of giving analysis that man is at the, God has created man, then man, animals, so hierarchy, so we don't believe in that theory. We still have a sustainable model and if we go back to a traditional system, I think we can protect the environment, otherwise we can't.
Madam, what you're saying is actually, ethical use of technology is more important. That is what has ruined this situation, ethical use of technology, that has created all problem. That if you are not ethical using technology, that is at our hand, we are doing more danger to, we are not far sighted, we are near sighted developed, and it is not leading to sustainable development, that's all.
Sir, congratulations for nicely explained, inspirational nature, thank you nicely explained, sir. And for you, congratulations for the three speakers. In fact, nature is a treasury, the man wants greedy, 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 he wants everything from nature. And technological ethics must be covered in the education system, sir. This is my observation, sir. Congratulations for the three speakers.
Hey Dr Rao.
Komosar wants to say something, yes sir, yes sir.
Appreciate Kashmir Murmu, this paper is very well written and very well guided by Professor Alaka. I am really happy. And I, I really appreciate, I really enjoyed her interaction, her response. The way she explained the question of, asked by, perhaps Dr Rao. Dr Rao had asked a question and she replied very aptly, very correctly, and very nicely. Really, I really appreciate, I really appreciate. This should be like a speaker, I don't judge, but I am impressed, I am giving my own impression and observation, very nice. And the paper is very clean, it is well guided by Professor Alaka, I really appreciate, thank you.
Thank you Dr Das for your comments and also thank Kashmir for being so confident in her approach. We should have seen her while presenting, well, that was not possible, okay, she wanted to show her presentation and not herself. So we should have seen her while she was presenting, so we should have seen her better, judged her better. Well, the response was very good, thank you Kashmir, good wishes. Well, our two, Dr Kalas Mahana sir for carrying on the further question.
Okay, thanks so much Uki Kashmir for your excellent presentation and responses to the questions of our learning professors. And in the first special session, we have, we have discussed, we have discovered the talents, the creativity of young research scholars with the commitment to the philosophical reflection. And you know, today, we have, we chose poor participants, they have presented their papers on their own way. Everything, and everybody has potentiality to explore their respective things. And my thanks goes to Mr Amin Shan Kivari, Anupam Chowdhury, Smithi Mai Basandia, Kashmir Murmu, the way they have presented their papers and interacted with our learning professors. And we are indebted to our professors, our assistant judges and viewers, like Professor Ranjit Ghosh and Professor Robinas, Professor Colston Das, Professor Anupar, Professor Dr Keem Nan Rao, and our professor, Professor Jayanti Pejarsni from Delhi University, and Professor Pramathma Das, our Armini, and for others, those have shown their observation, put their observation on each persons and through their, through sharing their wisdom, we are really benefited by their observation and stories. And special thanks to the supervisors of these participants, these research scholars like Dr Tashan Suple, Mr P Ghoshan, Dr Kabita Das, Dr Olkananda Parida. And we have special thanks to them, because they have well guided their students, they have well guided their research scholars. And they are the prominent speakers in futures. And I also thank all the viewers, those have been present till now, those have encouraged our participants. And my special thanks goes to Mr, Professor PK Das, the Armini, the real architect of philosophy family, who has done a lot for philosophy family, who has taken lot of pain to connect these speakers, these research scholars and to interact with it. And my thanks goes to our moderator, Dr Keem Nan Rao. The way he has explored his philosophy reflection through moderating all the sessions of today. So today, I have special thanks to Professor Dr Keem Nan Rao. And with this, once again, I offer my gratitude to all the viewers, all the speakers, all the moderate, all the observers and our assistant judges for their presence and for their commitment for philosophy family, thanks so much.
So, Dr Kalas Mahana sir, I also thank you for thanking everybody and for your comments and observations during the course of the sessions. But one thing I request, the participants for the second special session, while they are joining, it's good, but I request them that they should be with their guides, like the way today we had Anupam. He was with his guide, that is encouraging actually, we should come up, we should, we should inform. Yeah, so that, so that we will feel, the student, the scholars will feel good and there will be a good feeling in the family also. So, I request the participants in the second session to come up with their guides, so that we can learn from their guides also. That's our, and our objective is to learn, yes.
Yes sir, yes sir, yes sir. But, but, but.
Okay, and Professor Jayanti, okay Professor Jayanti, you are requested to be present in all the sessions to encourage our participants. Professor Jayanti.
Ah, yes sir, yes sir, truly, truly, Jayanti Madam, please, please be with us, please be with us in this special session, sir. Please be with us.
Sir, hello, Dr Rao.
Sir, sir, sir.
Sir, I'll be there, I'll be there, thank you so.
Actually, actually, we, actually, we request all the supervisors or guides, they should join and encourage their students. But even if that is not possible for some students, for some participants, they should come forward alone.
Okay, 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 no issue, no issue.
We have to request, we have to request, we have to request the supervisor to join.
That should be, that should be. But the, but the, but the students should be very much free from the presence and absence of their guides, because if they are guided, they can battle the war. Okay, so what we request all the guides, supervisors, please join and encourage your students and also the, make this program successful.
Because, because they have to witness, because they have to witness the presence and witness of their scholars.
And, and also it is uploaded in YouTube, it is for all, so it is, it is a, it is a big work, because it is open for all.
Why, why I say this is, we understand Arjuna is all capable, but the presence of Krishna makes all the difference, the guide.
Oh, okay.
That's the reason I.
So the, so the presence of both this scholar and supervisor is very much solicited.
Indeed, well, they said, if they are absent, it's alright, if they are present, that would be still more unlikely.
But students, but students should be free from the presence or absence of their guides, if they are really guided. That is my point.
Okay, okay, fine, fine, fine.
Thank you, with this, with this, the meeting is declared closed, thank you.